Now call the media of Carvey County Board of Commissioners, order please rise for a moment. Silence, prayer, and the pledge of allegiance.
Father, today we pray for those whose health is compromised and that you will heal them. For those who have been in the path of devastation from the recent fires. We remember those who have lost their lives suddenly. And we hold in our hearts the families forever changed by grief and loss. Rest in God as the day unfolds, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning county business at this time? Three none, we'll move on.
The report of executive sessions held?
There were no executive, executive sessions held.
Department reports, the budget transfers?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
There were no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of check numbers, two-three-seven-one-one-nine through two-three-seven-two-three-five for expenditures through the general fund clearing account totaling six million, two-hundred-sixty-six thousand, ninety-two dollars and five cents.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
The treasures report?
Move to accept, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
The personnel report for county departments.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
The acknowledgements for courts and row offices.
Motion acknowledged, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed, copies won't be made available to press point request. Boards and authorities, Animal Shelter Advisory Commission. For approval, appointment to a vacancy on the Carbon County Animal Shelter Advisory Commission term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Jason Bell of Jim Flora, Pennsylvania.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Children in use? For approval and execution, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Purchase a service agreement with the providers as listed as per the attached rates.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Communications nine-one-one for approval and execution. Request, excuse me, requests received from the communications director for a three-year contract for licenses and maintenance agreement on GeoCom Maintainer ArcGIS Desktop Software with GeoCom Incorporated of St. Cloud, Minnesota. The total cost is seven thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars with an annual payment of two thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars each year, August tw- one, two thousand twenty-three through July thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
E O T C grant application for approval authorized the filing of an application with the Office of the State Fire Commissioners for an Emergency Services Training Center Capital Grant Program application in the amount of sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Grant funds will be used for the purchase of propane training props and associated equipment.
Move to approve, second. Discussion, does this, uh, grant, uh, require a match?
No.
No? Okay, good. That's all.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Information technology for approval and execution. A proposal received from the Director of Information Technology for security training from NOBE four of Clearwater, Florida for security training software for the county no- network. Term is for four years at a total cost of six thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty cents with twelve months free.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
The seventy-six building for approval and execution. A proposal from Johnson Controls Fire Protection L P of Allentown, Pennsylvania to provide install program and text access control equipment for four doors and a controller on the second floor of the seventy-six building in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. This is under Pennsylvania State Contract Number forty-four zero-zero-zero-two-three-nine-six-two.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Planning and Development, C D B G, two thousand and twenty-two delegation of signing. For ratification, Community Development Block Grant Delegation of Signing Authority Resolution for Contract Number eighty-six-two-two-five listing the Director of the Carbon County Planning and Development and Chief Elected Officials as authorized signatories on contracts and program invoices for C D B G and or C D B G competitive programs. The first item is to ratify the execution of forms.
Motion to ratify, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
The next item is to adopt Resolution Number twenty-three dash zero-one-nine.
Motion adopt, or resolution, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Worker Protection and Investment Certification Form for Approval and Execution. Executive Order two thousand twenty-one dash six Worker Protection and Investment Certification Form as required for the Community Development Block Grant Delegation of Signing Authority Contract Number eighty-six-two-two-five.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
The Solicitors Report?
Thank you for, uh, the Area Agency on Aging for approval and execution of an agreement with Tamacua Adult Daycare of Tamacua, Pennsylvania to continue to provide adult daycare services for the term July one, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four at the rate of sixty-three dollars, thirty-two cents a day. No increase.
Next, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
For the five-twenty-five Iron Street, the project in Lee Heaton, uh, seeking a motion for approval and execution of change orders numbers, uh, eleven through thirteen to the contract with C M G of Easton Incorporated. Uh, increasing the contract by twenty thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars, forty-two cents for a new contract total of one million, two hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars, forty-two cents due to change order eleven, additional exterior signage, no cost. Uh, number twelve to add roof hatch and roof drains at the cost of seven thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars, eighty-eight cents. And number thirteen for added grades, full depth paving, uh, thirteen thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars, fifty-four cents. And seal coating has been removed from the scope of the project.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
For information technology, uh, seeking a motion, motion for approval and execution of Addendum Number One to the Agreement dated, uh, February two, two thousand twenty-three with, uh, Jerome P. Scarpotti of Lee Heaton, Pennsylvania to provide training and assistance to the Carbon County Information Technology Department on an as-needed basis. The term will be extended to August twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. And compensation during this term will be one hundred fifty dollars an hour for a maximum of not more than ten hours for the term. In all other respects, the agreement dated, uh, February second, two thousand twenty-three is ratified and confirmed in full.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Next, uh, seeking approval and execution of a second and final year renewal to the contract with R F O Incorporated of Lee Heaton, Pennsylvania for delivery of number two fuel oil, heating oil, and off-road diesel fuel to various county sites. The renewal period, uh, is from April one, two thousand twenty-three to March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
All right, and the first two resolutions, uh, seeking a motion to ratify Resolution twenty-three dash zero-two-zero. Uh, resolution recognizing Francis G. Kresge of Lee Heaton, Pennsylvania for fifty years of service to the Franklin Township Fire Company.
Move to approve, second.
And I will read the resolution. Whereas Carvey County, Pennsylvania is fortunate to have among its residents many dedicated volunteers, particular in those committed to the fire service and image, emergency response. Whereas Francis G. Kresge Butch has for the past fifty years volunteered his time in Franklin Township Fire Company, Lee Heaton, Pennsylvania. Whereas Franklin Kresge has been an active firefighter with Franklin Township Fire Company since joining in August of nineteen seventy-three. Whereas for the past thirty-three or thirty-seven years, Francis has been serving as a fire police, uh, for the fire, for the Franklin Township Fire Company. Whereas Frank, Francis Kresge has served as captain for eleven years, Lee Heaton, or lieutenant for fourteen years, president for six, vice president for seven, and as fire police for the Franklin Township Fire Company. Whereas Francis Kresge has also served as a trustee for eleven years on the Franklin Township Fire Company Board of Directors. Now, as be it resolved, be the resolution of the Carvey County Board of Commissioners wish to acknowledge and that Francis Kresge, for the, for the valuable contributions he has made over the years as a volunteer firefighter and fire police and to offer his appreciation for Francis G. Kresge, adopted by the Carvey County Board of Commissioners this twenty-ninth day of June, two thousand twenty-three by, uh, Commissioner Wayne Knostein, Rocky Honor, and Chris Lucasevich. And I apologize because I always, I've known Butch for, since I'm a little kid. And I was always Butch, it was never Francis, so when I had read Francis off, it was like, uh, and I think, and Wayne's gonna read another one, uh, for the next one, I was gonna maybe give him my report. Uh, but these two guys I know, and then I said that at the ceremony on Monday. Uh, Bruce, uh, I rode with Bruce, uh, for years. We worked at Mack Trucks in nineteen seventy-seven, and I used to always look at my watch and, okay, Bruce, uh, we're gonna be late for work. And, uh, when that whistle went off, then boots went on, and he was in that fire truck. And the same thing with Francis, like I, I know Butch for years, and he was like the neighbor, uh, that everybody wanted to know, like, what does he do? Well, he was a great volunteer for the firefighters, and he was the one that, when, when you went to an accident or anything like that, he was the one that always said, keep it moving, you know, to get the emergency vehicles through. So I can't, uh, express like how much these people mean value to, uh, you know, the area. And just for fire companies itself, you know, we got our two hospitals in the area, but, uh, our fire companies are the heartbeat, uh, of, of your community. So I want to thank both of them for what they have done. Thank you.
I'm gonna pull the board, Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
All right, and next, Commissioner Honor kind of ruined the surprise motion to ratify Resolution twenty-three dash zero-two-one, uh, recognizing Bruce Wolf of, uh, Lee Heaton, Pennsylvania for fifty years of service to the Franklin Township Fire Company.
Move to ratify. That's a second. Go ahead, Wayne.
Okay, Mr. Honor?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes, and I'll read this one for Bruce. Whereas Bruce Wolf has for the past fifty years volunteered his time to the Franklin Township Fire Company, Lee Heaton, P A. Whereas Bruce Wolf has been an active firefighter with the Franklin Township Fire Company since joining in August of nineteen seventy-three. Whereas Bruce Wolf has served for fire chief for sixteen years, assistant fire chief for ten years, captain for seven years, and engineer for one year for the Franklin Township Fire Company. Whereas Bruce Wolf has also served as vice president for two years, treasurer for two years, trustee for one year, the Franklin Township Fire Company Board of Directors. Whereas Bruce Wolf has also been involved in a Carbon County Firemen's Association. Although it doesn't state it in here, he served as the treasurer for the County Fire Association, uh, for twenty-five years and stepping down last month because of health issues. Now therefore be it resolved that the Carbon County Board of Commissioners wishes to ignite, acknowledge, and thank Bruce for the valuable contributions he has made over the years as a volunteer firefighter to offer its appreciation to Bruce Wolf, adopted again by the Carbon County Board of Commissioners this twenty-ninth day of two thousand twenty-three, of course, signed by three commissioners and Alar. So I would also like to mention that the program they had for the gentleman, although it was moved up a little bit, it was a terrific turnout. Uh, they had a little fire truck parade for him from the, started at St. Luke's Hospital and ended at the fire company where he was seated at the, uh, the front bay doors there. There were well over two hundred firemen, or if not more, probably closer to two hundred and fifty, uh, firefighters and family members and, uh, a lot of ex-chiefs that I haven't seen or past chiefs who have retired, a lot of other personnel that have worked with, uh, Bruce over the years, including out of county, uh, you know, uh, fire companies such as Pope Township and Walnut Port, who we always, uh, we get to work with quite a bit. But it was a, a very nice, short program, short on speeches, but, uh, it was greatly appreciated by the Wolf family in particular, as well as the Kresge family. Uh, with all the years of service, it had to be thousands of years of service, uh, from those attending that are active in the service. So, uh, very nice program. Thank you, uh, Franklin Township Fire Company for putting on this, uh, nice event for these two gentlemen who really deserve it for all the things they do. And you won't ever go to a parade and see this many versus owners in a row. I mean, they just kept coming and coming and coming and coming. I don't know where they went to, but there's an awful big field up in the back, but for the parking. And I said, I'd, uh, like you said, how many were there? You know, you see a couple here and a couple here in parades, but. Most firemen I've seen in one place at one time without smoke and flames. No, it was a great event, it really was.
Okay.
All right, uh, for tax assessment, well, there, there's a long way here and there's a short way.
Do you want to take a single motion?
Um, there are, uh, requests for, uh, motions to approve payment of refund of, uh, county taxes for, uh, nine separate taxpayers. Uh, they're relatively nominal, all are under three hundred dollars. Would you entertain a motion to approve all nine?
I can make that motion and approve all nine if it's okay with the rest of you, if you're, if you.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Nothing further.
Any further business? During that Commissioners' Reports, Mr. Honor?
Um, I don't, I think I gave, see, that's why I did that about the first responders here. I thought I'd only had three minutes at the end, so I figured I'd break it up a little bit. But, uh, uh, I do have a little bit something on, uh, like even with our, our, uh, what's going on here. Uh, well, first of all, at five-twenty-five, uh, we're just about winding down for all the work done there. Uh, the line striping is gonna be done on Wednesday and a little bit of work with the locks, and then everything's completed there. Um, for the administration building here, we met with C M G. And, uh, in fact, the controller asked me to go over some of this stuff to make sure, uh, everything is accurate. Uh, so we'll be going over that. And, uh, we did meet with C M G with, on the subject, and, uh, materials is gonna be the issue. Uh, if we can get materials within four weeks, uh, they're ready to start a couple days after that. But I don't want to give a date until we get, you know, from back from them. And, uh, yesterday we did do the walkthrough, uh, for the courthouse renovations. And I'm not gonna go through all this, but I think there were, what did we have yesterday? Was it nineteen, how many contractors were here, Ellie? Was it?
I, I didn't count.
Yeah, we had quite a few contractors that went through and, and, uh, I mean, it went well. Um, we explained everything to them, what has to be done, and, and I'm sure we're gonna have, uh, more questions as the bids come in, uh, but the date has been moved, and I do have this all here. If you want this, I'll send this to you. Um, in fact, here's all the dates. If you see in the red, it's been changed then dates, you know, what we're gonna hit. But, uh, uh, actual renovation should be around, I think it's November seventeenth and eighteenth should be when it should be started. But, uh, I'll, I'll send this to everybody that you have this, because I don't need to go, I don't need to bore everything, everybody with the dates. And, uh, I think one of the things that I, you know, and I focused on a little bit, and I, I, I think if you look at, um, like what we approved, uh, for some of these areas like that hatch, uh, at Lee Heaton, you know, for that. Um like what we approved uh for some of these areas like that hatch uh at Lee Heighten, you know, for that. Um we gotta start doing, I think, a little bit of a better job on and not just us. But I think the people uh that are running this project for us. Um like here's a hatch, um didn't anybody know that you had to get out in the roof, you know? So I think one once that's in, you know, everything has to be in the plans, I mean, these change orders, you know. Time after time and my big gripe is like we're not supposed to uh piecemeal things. So what is ten change orders in a project mean? To me, that's piecemealing, you know? So and that's my gripe to like to state, uh if we can't piecemeal, I don't think anybody else should. And and I think it's not fair to the taxpayers. Uh because, you know, even there at Lee Heighten, you know, it started off, I think, as a two point nine million dollar project. And it weren't wound up being three point one and uh uh. It might only look like two hundred thousand dollars, but two hundred thousand dollars to the taxpayers means a lot. So I think uh and I think with the controllers' concerns that, you know, you asked me about things and. We just gotta make sure when we approve this, whoever's gonna be the bidders, that's, we gotta make sure that that's gonna run smooth. Because over in the courthouse, uh you can't have uh a court date for Tuesday. And something runs into Tuesday, that that can't happen, you know? Uh and even like with our project here, I think C M G, uh they gave us a pretty good presentation, most of the work is gonna be done at night. Uh there's not, you know, nine weekends, there's probably one percent of the work that's gonna be done here. I mean, they gotta come in and do a little bit of spackling and stuff like that, but I'd say almost like ninety five percent of the work that's gonna be done here is it gonna be at night? Um I think that's about it, I said about the firemen, I I said it's like uh people don't know the value of them. And and I always said that it's like, I hope we get this uh this sender that everybody can get trained up there because. There's two lives that got saved, yours, when they come out to get you. And this training that gives them the skill to get back to their families, if they don't get back home, they don't get out to come back out the next time, so. I hope we move forward on a lot of stuff, so thank you.
Mister Lukasevich?
Yeah, a couple of comments, first, it's worth repeating, I believe, my private comments to both Butch and Bruce, Mister Kreske and Mister Wolf. You know, there there's no doubt that they've set a clear standard of excellence. Uh for selfless service and and public service and um as I relate to them, I hope that will inspire. Others to follow in their footsteps, not only their dedication, but the length at which they went. Uh to provide that service uh to county residents uh and beyond. Uh secondly, wanna make uh comment on the closure of the beach at Mach Chunk Lake Park. So on the twenty seventh, uh Mach Chunk Lake Park was notified by C W N Environmental of of Pottstown. That one of three swim sections exceeded Pennsylvania Department of Health. Uh recreational use bacteria criteria standard and the section I'm referring to is the west section. We have an east section, a middle section and a west section. It exceeded the standard by uh hitting a level of about two hundred and seventy six. Parts per one hundred millimeter, milliliter, the standard is two hundred and thirty five units. Let me just confirm that number there. It hit two seventy six exceeding the two thirty five standard. Uh the samples were taken between seven fifteen and seven thirty on Tuesday, the twenty sixth, analyzed on Wednesday, the twenty seventh. Uh the west section had the count of two seventy six, whereas the east section had a count of six. The middle section of fourteen, the water was retested this morning and results expected sometime tomorrow. It takes almost eighteen hours to actually run the test uh once uh the analysis process starts. In the past fifteen years, we've only had three other incidences similar. Uh where we had to go ahead and close the beach because of exceeding those standards. Uh that was in two thousand sixteen, two thousand nine and two thousand and eight. But again, uh all three of those incidents like this one coincided with periods of very heavy rain. Uh uh prior to the sampling and the samplings occur throughout the swim season. Every week at Mach Chunk Lake Park and that's a legal requirement there. In regards to the Fourth of July weekend, as I mentioned uh last week. Uh admission policies are modified, see the county website, Mach Chunk Lake Park website for details on that. Importantly, and I'll say I'm all amped up, my board shorts are out, my Hawaiian shirt, my flip flops, sunglasses. Sunblock are all out for the inaugural run of Mach Chunk Lake seven four one that starts uh this Saturday. Uh if any public who are interested, go to the Carbon Transit website, the Commissioners Facebook page. Or our website for uh details on that and I'm gonna tell, while we didn't invite Andy Muller and he normal. Normally invites us to inaugural runs, I'm more amped up about this. Than I was the Iron Horse Ramble Run and the continual ones that are coming up, that's all I have.
Mister Note Stein?
Yeah, just on that uh the grant before you do ask for the training center, that's for the uh propane training props. The uh P E M A came out with a grant round uh which is due tomorrow, I'm trying to finalize it right now. Uh just became available uh the end of March, if no, uh May. And uh it's for grants between twenty five and hundred thousand dollars, it's not a matching grant. But uh when we constructed the site, we had the underground propane tank put in right away at a thousand gallons, it's filled already. Lines are already run in ground uh to a concrete pad where we'll use these uh propane props that are. Uh can be moved, we'll storm inside and uh we different scenarios, we had to get an igniter, a regulator, et cetera. That's basic for all of them, a two hundred fifty gallon simulator, a barbecue simulator, a tank simulator, a pan simulator, et cetera. And it's listed in the grant application when I uh have most of that finalized, but it's the scope of works, the uh. Narratives and uh projects, particulars and everything, so. And the backup documentation such as we had to go back and get the twenty twenty one county audit, et cetera, attach that and several. Other documents that had to be included in the grant application, so hopefully we'll get the funding. Not, I will be announcing in uh in conjunction with another group that is working on something for us. Uh in the coming year, but I don't wanna release that until those people are available that are gonna do the project for us. And it's a very good project, so I'm looking forward to that and working with this particular group, so. As far as the turnout again, you know, you can't say much about that, the crowd that was there and everything and. They had ba- eight big sheet cakes, fortunately, because Rocky ate two. No, they had uh get about four left, had more than enough refreshments and everything and it was a good, good time for. Uh socializing and getting to talk to the other firemen from the other areas that uh a meet and greet type and. Talking to the Wolf family and Bruce and Butch, of course, but. Uh it was just, uh it's better to know these people before you get out on the scene, so you know who you're working with, you know their capabilities. Uh and it was just a great event just to socialize as well with the your fellow firefighters from throughout the area. Uh one thing I would do wanna mention as well is the the mall fire in Monroe County. One fire department responded to Broad Itsville and sat in their station for five hours where these people were. Uh at that fire because there were so many events going on, now they were uh people. Manpower is low, they needed tankers in the end and uh running out of water in their system there and. Uh it was a huge turnout with uh even with Ekton, some from Jersey. Uh multi-county response, a lot of move up assements such as the one I mentioned that somebody moved all the way into. Broad Itsville Station about twenty miles away maybe and uh. Uh an on-scene uh event is, I was told there were eight ladder trucks operating. At that scene and where they got the water for in the room, I uh. To park the apparatus at that mall, I don't know where they got all the apparatus and how they parked it there, but it was a. Great response from a multi-county and state uh effort and unfortunately, all those businesses were lost.
I think it's worth, Commissioner, if you wouldn't mention about the impact uh it had on our alcohol and drug program, actually, with the contractor.
Did uh, we had uh an office in that building.
Yeah.
Uh with the drug and alcohol, so uh we're scrambling to find a space between the Carbon County. Uh carbon mineral pipe, drug and alcohol, uh looking for a space of two to three thousand feet, square feet to get up and running. Uh they're running, uh operating right now remotely with their laptops and that. But uh everything they had there was was lost like other places, uh and all the business that bridal shop unfortunately and. How do you replace things like that, that, you know, with weddings come up, including the owner's daughter. Her own dress was lost in the fire, so things like that you don't replace and. Uh they're saying they're gonna rebuild, I doubt if they'll ever find a cause uh what started it, but hopefully they'll. Be able to rebuild in a hurry and uh and hopefully we have a place that uh. We can move our uh drug and alcohol program for Monroe County into soon, so. Yep, so it affects us all, even outside that area, hopefully we never have that, an incident of that magnitude. Okay, alright, Rachel? Good, okay, Amy?
Good morning.
Morning.
Rocky, you're still, you know, you're a minute and twenty seven seconds over your three minutes.
Well, I was gonna say about that it was a record fire trucks in a row and record cakes in a row, but I didn't get to finish with the cake, so. I would have really been over.
To stay on with the firefighter stuff, how many, do we have a lot of fifty year firefighters in Carbon County?
Uh probably more than I think, uh uh not everyone recognizes. Uh the firefighters uh like, well, Franklin and for instance, uh they only formed in seventy two. So, you know, that was uh uh some of the first might been the first for them. The uh I know Lee Heighten has two already, they have two coming up next year, I believe. Uh that have been there fifty years and still respond to all calls when they can. Uh a lot of the former fire chiefs I saw, they all fifty year members and uh some of the firefighters as well, there's. That's why I mentioned the uh total years of the people in that room had to be thousands because uh. You know, there's a hundred years just for two individuals and uh several others, I, that's a good question, I think it's something we uh. Should look at maybe and see how many uh active, I don't mean once in a while, active. And and the other ones we should include is the auxiliaries, the people that have been. Such as Franklin and Mahoney and all the other uh fire departments that have auxiliaries. The amount of time these people put in raising funds for the firefighters. Uh between the wedding receptions, the block parties and all the other functions, the breakfasts and everything else they do. It's a lot of time and effort and uh we're always looking for volunteers, not only in the fire and. But we look for the volunteers to serve in the auxiliaries, even hey, you don't have to be there every day, it's. Give your time a couple of times a month, if you're a bookkeeper, a lot of times uh uh we need treasures or secretaries. That uh a lot, these guys, uh they're there for the action and the training and that and they're. Not always the the best bookkeepers, let's say, so we're always looking for people that are trained to do. Uh take care of treasures reports and uh secretarial reports and auditing the uh fireman's relief associations. Those people are really have to be careful with, uh they have to have some kind of skills for uh bookkeeping. Because the rules are really very stringent for uh fireman's relief funds.
Yeah, and you even look at the auxiliaries, I mean, like even you look at Franklin and Mahoney and all these other ones. I mean, there's women in them kitchens and and the men as well that were there when I was a kid before Franklin Fire Company was even formed. I mean, they were the ones that helped, uh like I said, there at Franklin, they had, they had picnics up behind the uh like where the. Uh Borough Building is for them, they were having picnics and they were doing uh dances at Penn Forest. And these people are still there, I mean, there, there's gotta be a bunch that are way over fifty years that that. And that's one thing maybe we should look into, the auxiliaries, I mean, they were dedicated.
Some of those people were in seventies and eighties that are out there volunteering all the time.
And that's what I said, I said, you look at every kitchen wherever you go in any fire company, there's people there that are probably way over fifty years.
And uh Mister Lukasevich on the beach? Can you explain a little bit how the three samples, it was six fourteen and two seventy six, how in God's name? It's all the same water?
Ri- right, and it's separated by maybe a hundred feet of the sampling area. You know, the best guess we have is there's actually a swell, so all the water comes down, it goes into the swell. And that swell kinda empties out on the, towards the western side, so that that's the thought on that, but really don't know.
Over the years, I I thought there were actually more times that we closed because of the bacteria and uh. It's always after the big rains and I wonder if it was always the same area that failed, I don't know if we looked at, you didn't look at that?
No, Dave didn't, you know, didn't ask him to, yeah.
That is all I have, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm done, I'm done.
What time did we adjourn?
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't adjourn, I thought we did.